Welcome, everybody, this morning to the Joint City Commission Economic Development Advisory Board Joint Session Workshop. We appreciate everyone being here today. Thank you for taking time out of your day. I wonder if Mr. Clerk, you can please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst.
President.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
Here.
Mayor Trent House.
Here. And could the board please take attendance?
Jay Adams.
Here.
Kenneth Hertz.
Russ Kletten.
Enrique Bargioni.
Kevin Cochran.
Michael Starah.
And William Feinberg.
Great, and we have a quorum for the advisory board. So, having said that, Mr. City Manager, would you like to begin the program this morning?
Yes.
It's not working.
Can you hear me?
Okay, now we can.
All right, good morning, honorable mayor and commissioners, vice mayor and commissioners. So, Daphne has a program prepared, and she's going to lead the discussion on the Economic Development Advisory Board. They've requested a meeting with you all to further discuss strategy and how they can also support and add value to some of the efforts that the city is doing.
Great. Daphne.
I'm going to have to get up for a mic, unless, can everybody hear me?
No, you need to be on a mic because we're recording. Well, actually, you can come over here. First of all, I really appreciate you all wanting to meet with us today because this is an important committee that is often not given the time of day that this commission believes it should, at least I personally believe it should be given. So, I'm hopeful we'll have some very meaningful discussion today. Daphne.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for meeting with the Economic Development Advisory Board. I believe in January, the commission decided that economic development and economic diversification was a priority of the commission as a whole citywide. So, the advisory board wanted to seek some guidance as to what specifically the commission was looking for, whether it was proposing some incentives or looking at a consultant to look at the industries of the city and seeing how we could promote them a bit better. So, I'd like to lead with Vice Chair Bargioni to continue that discussion, to see where the advisory board wants to be when it comes to proposing recommendations to the commission, when it comes to spurring economic diversification, economic development, business development, attraction, retention, and growth throughout the community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. We have engaged for quite a few months on a broad discussion on what should be our role in economic development and what do the commissioners seek from us. And at the same time, we would more than welcome your feedback on what you think are the priorities for our board. In the last meeting, we discussed three topics in general terms. One, the proposed implementation of incentive programs, which can take a broad set of ideas. Second, the proposal to obtain a consultant, which was proposed by my colleague Ross, to identify key industries. And then third, the proposal to offer financial support to mass district and fat village events. And Jay can address that topic in more detail. But we welcome this opportunity because we want to have an open dialogue with you, you know? And this could be a great reset to start fresh and clear and on the same page regarding where do you want us to go, right? All of us have very clear ideas, a lot of diverse ideas.
So, why don't we hear from each member?
Yes.
And see, you know, exactly what that means. And because we haven't really had this conversation. So, Kevin, you're number one. Why don't you tell us what you think? What do you think the committee should do? What do you think the commission should do? And as a city, how do we work together to make that happen?
Well, one of the ideas--
Could you talk into the mic a little bit?
One of the ideas that I would like to propose is that we harness our burgeoning young workforce coming into downtown, and we seek to promote diversification of our economy by starting to attract more digital startups. In particular, we've all read in the news about the generative AI revolution. That revolution is very real. I'm right in the thick of it. And what that's opening up is a lot of opportunity for new people, new companies, to be formed and to transform industries. And I think, given our workforce, given the economic redevelopment that's occurring downtown, I think this is a very good opportunity to try to harness a significant change that's undergoing in our economy and place ourselves in a leadership position to do that.
So, do you have any specific suggestions on how a city could do that? How can a city government, what role would it play?
I think we can take a lesson learned from Miami. Not that I think Miami does, you know, things particularly well, but I think that there are certain things that--[262.12]
Welcome, everybody, this morning to the Joint City Commission Economic Development Advisory Board Joint Session Workshop. We appreciate everyone being here today. Thank you for taking time out of your day. I wonder if, Mr. Clerk, you can please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
President.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sternman?
Here.
Mayor Trent Hals?
Here. And could the Board please take attendance?
Jay Adams?
Here.
Kenneth Hers?
Russ Kletten?
Enrique Bargioni?
Kevin Cochran?
Michael Starah?
And William Feinberg?
Great. And we have a quorum for the Advisory Board. So, having said that, Mr. City Manager, would you like to begin the program this morning?
Yes.
It's not working.
Can you hear me?
Okay, now we can.
All right. Good morning, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. So Daphne has a program prepared, and she's going to lead the discussion on the Economic Development Advisory Board. They've requested a meeting with you all to further discuss strategy and how they can also support and add value to some of the efforts that the city is doing.
Great. Daphne?
I'm gonna have to get up for a mic. Unless, can everybody hear me?
No, you need to be on a mic because we're recording.
Take this off.
Well, actually, you can come over here.
There's lots of them.
First of all, I really appreciate you all wanting to meet with us today because this is an important committee that is often not given the time of day that this commission believes it should, at least I personally believe it should be given. So I'm hopeful we'll have some very meaningful discussion today. Daphne?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for meeting with the Economic Development Advisory Board. I believe in January, the commission decided that economic development and economic diversification was a priority of the commission as a whole citywide. So the Advisory Board wanted to seek some guidance as to what specifically the commission was looking for, whether it was proposing some incentives, or looking at a consultant to look at the industries of the city and seeing how we could promote them a bit better. So I'd like to lead with Vice Chair Bargioni to continue that discussion, to see where the Advisory Board wants to be when it comes to proposing recommendations to the commission, when it comes to spurring economic diversification, economic development, business development, attraction, retention, and growth throughout the community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, we have engaged for quite a few months on a broad discussion on what should be our role in economic development, and what do the commissioners seek from us. And at the same time, we would more than welcome your feedback on what you think are the priorities for our board. In the last meeting, we discussed three topics in general terms. One, the proposed implementation of incentive programs, which can take a broad set of ideas. Second, the proposal to obtain a consultant, which was proposed by my colleague Ross, to identify key industries. And then third, the proposal to offer financial support to mass district and fat village events. And Jay can address that topic in more detail. But we welcome this opportunity because we want to have an open dialogue with you, you know? And this could be a great reset, to start fresh and clear and on the same page regarding where do you want us to go, right? All of us have very clear ideas, a lot of diverse ideas.
So why don't we hear from each member?
Yes.
And see, you know, exactly what that means. And because we haven't really had this conversation. So Kevin, you're number one. Why don't you tell us what you think? What do you think the committee should do? What do you think the commission should do? And as a city, how do we work together to make that happen?
Well, one of the ideas-
Could you talk into the mic a little bit?
One of the ideas that I would like to propose is that we harness our burgeoning young workforce coming into downtown, and we seek to promote diversification of our economy by starting to attract more digital startups. In particular, we've all read in the news about the generative AI revolution. That revolution is very real. I'm right in the thick of it. And what that's opening up is a lot of opportunity for new people, new companies, to be formed and to transform industries. And I think, given our workforce, given the economic redevelopment that's occurring downtown, I think this is a very good opportunity to try to harness a significant change that's undergoing in our economy and place ourselves in a leadership position to do that.
So do you have any specific suggestions on how a city could do that? How can a city government, what role would it play?
I think we can take a lesson learned from Miami. Not that I think Miami does, you know, things particularly well, but I think that there are certain things that they have pioneered that have had success. And one of them is promoting the city of Miami to new people that are moving downtown, and helping provide resources for them to get acclimated to the community, find local events, connect with others in the neighborhood, and find local jobs. So there's an organization that I work with called Refresh Miami, and it's basically a resource for people that are looking to move to South Florida because they want to join a new startup. It's a very easy place to find. They can learn all about Miami. They can learn about all the companies that are in Miami. They can learn about all the jobs in Miami. They can learn about all the events that are being hosted. And it's a really empowering environment. So I personally know a lot of people that when they look to move to South Florida, I have to sell them on Fort Lauderdale. Because the first thing they do is they go to Refresh Miami, and they're like, this is where everything's happening. And then you have to spend hours educating them. It's like, no, 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 no. What's happening is here in Fort Lauderdale. Trust me on this. Come to Fort Lauderdale. I'll take you for a walk on Riverwalk. I'll walk you around downtown. Walk you around the beach. And after you spend a couple of hours with someone, then they realize, like, oh, right, Fort Lauderdale's a place to-
Is this like a concierge service? Is it a website?
It's just a website.
It's a website?
It's just a website. But it's very, very effective at building community and helping people that are new to Miami find a place. I encourage you just to take a look at it, Refresh Miami. It's, we don't have the equivalent of that. And so a lot of people, when they're moving here, they might not like the idea of living in Miami. A lot of people move to Miami, then move out of Miami. You know, Miami's not the quality of life that we have here. But it's very easy to get hooked into Miami because, you know, it's so well-marketed, the city itself.
Okay. Bill?
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for meeting with us. We've been, I know, asking for so many times, and over the past two years, myself being on the board, just that we need some feedback from the commissioners and yourself, Mayor, to give us some direction. I think we keep, we meet every month or every other month, and we come up with these ideas, but they don't seem to go anywhere. So we feel like sometimes we're just, you know, beating a dead horse. And I know that, you know, we do appreciate, Chris, I know, Mayor, you've been in to meet with us and promised to, you know, give us your ear, but it's been difficult. And we've lost a lot of our members on the board because they just felt that they weren't being, their ideas were not being listened to. And I know that, you know, for myself, I can say that, you know, being in the construction industry, I own Allied Kitchen and Bath, and this will be my 40th year here in the city. You know, we, I've seen the process improve immensely for myself as a business. But many in the construction industry that I talk to, they just hate dealing with the building department, dealing with, so I know I've made suggestions about, you know, trying to streamline processes, trying to fast-track certain permits that are not major structural. Sometimes we go for permits that are so simple, and yet we have to, you know, meet so many requirements and regulations on simple matters. And, you know, I just think there, a concierge, I know, I believe, would be really, really great. But when we look at economic development, you know, I sit here and go, well, how do I improve, what can we do as a board to bring economy to our city? And I think that's, you know, it seems to be that there's so many different organizations, The Chamber, The Alliance, Broward Workshop. We're all doing a lot of the same things.
Well, they are and they aren't.
They are.
They are and they aren't.
They are and they aren't. Right. So I think there's a lot of mixed messages, and everybody seems to be competing for, you know, business to come here. But obviously, it's Fort Lauderdale, the city of Fort Lauderdale, that we are interested in. Listen, we all know, we're booming here. Where other cities are failing, Fort Lauderdale is growing faster than ever. So it's not like we're dying for business to come here. We're very, we are a very fortunate city. And I guess it's really just, you know, it's not rocket science. It's probably just a couple of things that, we just want to know how we can help. What can we do better? You know, is there an audience that we should be going after? Is there, you know, incentives, you know, are there programs that we can offer to anybody? But I believe the city is already doing that on their own. So, you know, we're not a marketing agency. You know, I know many of us suggest to, you know, try to bring new business here. Well, it's really not our job to go knock on doors to say, hey, you know, open up a business in Fort Lauderdale. You know, obviously, if we hear of somebody that's interested, we're here to toot the horn and say it's a great city to do business. But I guess, you know, it's just some direction that we've always lacked, and most of us said that we sit up here, but we really don't know what we're doing.
Okay. Russ?
Well, the only thing I would differ with my good friend, Bill, is that I actually know what I'm doing. As Bill mentioned, there are four or five or six from the DDA to the workshop to the chamber groups that all have an intent to try to develop economic development within Fort Lauderdale. Truth is, is that we know, the first thing we looked at is the fact that what are our major industries? Tourism, the marine industry, quite frankly, development. Those are our biggest industries at the moment. No, we're not going to become a tech hub. That's just not what's happening here in South Florida for about 1,000 different reasons. But what we don't have is a real review by the kinds of people that could tell us who is looking at Fort Lauderdale. So for instance, let's say you talk to a CBRE, you talk to a Cushman Wakefield, you're going to ask them, they represent clients from all over the country, clients that are looking to relocate. Part of our problem in terms of economic development is we know that, other than the main, we haven't built any new office space in downtown Fort Lauderdale in quite some time. Now, there are probably some things that you all are planning, but to try to recruit businesses and to try to recruit people to land here, you think of all the office space that's being built in Miami-Dade, it's not happening here. So those opportunities, we don't know what we need. We don't know who's interested. And we have to also understand, when those companies are thinking of relocating here, and by the way, we're not the Broward Alliance. The Broward Alliance has a mission to try to incentivize companies, organizations, to move to Broward County. Now, they try not to be specifically specific to a city. So how do we promote ourselves? To me, we have to understand the silo. We have to understand who's interested. When somebody in Cleveland is talking to CBRE and saying, we'd like to relocate 30, 40, or 50 of our people, why is Fort Lauderdale not being considered? Why are we not at the front of that hit parade? And that's the kind of thing that we need to learn. And so one of the things that we've advocated is to start to talk to some consultants within that industry. They know who's coming, who's interested, and why. And I just use CBRE as an example. I have no particular reason. There are others. We also know that economic development, and I know from my role in the workshop, when somebody's considering Fort Lauderdale, the first question they ask is, is how's crime? How's mobility? Where are my kids going to school? So there are numbers of issues that you may not normally think about that are economic development, but these are critical issues for companies small and large looking to locate. And those are challenges. And I think that the two things that, the two recommendations that I have is we need to do a better job of coordinating and not duplicating between all the organizations, like the Alliance, like the Chamber, like the DDA, all of those organizations. We need to have some sort of semi-annual, quarterly, joint meeting. We tried to do that. I know in the workshop, I worked with the DDA. I'm also very grateful for the city of Fort Lauderdale. I just want to give a special shout-out to Zoe Saunders, your education person with the city, who has done just a wonderful job of meeting with me and the DDA as we try to focus on some options in the downtown. This is economic development. Company wants to come here. Where are my kids going to school? You take a look at all those young folks that are moving, young professionals that are moving into all the buildings in the downtown area. There are strollers. Look, take a look. There are strollers all of a sudden that you're seeing on the streets. And I guarantee you that they're not all full of French Bulldogs and Shih Tzu's, okay? There are kids in there. We know that our three elementary schools are all oversubscribed in the downtown. So we, and that group's always been working with us, is we try to focus on potentially putting a charter school in the downtown so that we can, K-3. Now, what are the long-term opportunities for education? That's economic development. Because those companies who are looking here, who are talking about coming here, want to know, where are my employees' kids going to school? How do they get around? What about the mobility? So those are some of the things that I know you wrestle with on a regular basis, but they really count for economic development. They really do. An awful lot more than an incentive. So I'll call those by saying, we need to continue to focus on those kinds of issues that are really relevant and important to people who are making a decision to locate their business or to invest in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And we need to understand who those people are. Thanks. Appreciate you. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Jay?
This thing just moves right over, right? So to kind of feed off everything that's been said-
To somebody who has invested in Fort Lauderdale?
That what?
For someone who has invested in Fort Lauderdale.
Yes, yes.
Why did you invest in Fort Lauderdale?
So, you know, I appreciate the city helping out where they can. The CRA was awesome. Our area's blooming and becoming really kind of a center. We're one of the largest cities in the country for adding apartments. I think you saw that article, maybe Austin and Atlanta, we added more apartments than those two cities combined, which is incredible. So I do think lifestyle is like a big, big deal here. On a small level, the safety, you know, people walk in their strollers. Well, it's hard to walk around here. So I'm a corporate real estate guy for 30 years. Brought a lot of businesses into the county. And what they're looking for now is lifestyle. So people work out of their homes, out of the coffee shop, small offices, maybe satellite. People are tracking them. So big corporations are tracking, where are our people? They're all over the country. Where is it? Well, Fort Lauderdale's good. I think that we really need to get the transportation mobility kind of back on board and gear it up. We got billions of dollars with the county. Simple crosswalks, sidewalks, you know, just simple, the streetlights, pedestrian bridge on Northeast 9th Street. That Seerstown project I looked at, the new DRC submittal, it looks good. I think it looks actually pretty good. They had the south side pushed way back, an outdoor area, a cycle track. The cycle track could tie right into a pedestrian bridge over in the Holiday Park. I think a lot of people don't even know we have millions of people, or you know, hundreds of thousands of people in a Holiday Park. The bridge, I'm pricing, actually, so I'm working with the county. I'm trying to do a lot of this. It's a million dollars for a bridge. Call it 3 million, you know, with the, you know, the red tape. It's a very doable gig. So we have the water trail that's down on 9th Street, you know, kind of, we can do a lot of things that we kind of get too many plans, too many studies, too many people involved, and it's just, it's really hard. So that's not really our purview. I've been told, is to talk about this, but I keep talking about it. And again, I've invested in that area, and I think events are a small piece. I think safety and lifestyle's it. So that's, that's all I focus on.
Okay. Enrique, did you want to add to that?
I just wanted to emphasize the theme-
Look, speaking of-
There you go. The theme that Kevin brought up, because small startups is a representation not of where the economy is at, but where the economy will be. And Fort Lauderdale has an unusual, magnificent opportunity to capture the future. For a small startup of 10 to 30 employees to establish itself in Fort Lauderdale is not a problem. Because employees of such firms are very adaptable. They're used to, they're very self-reliant. They can organize the next Apple computer in a one-bedroom apartment. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's probably all they could afford.
That's all they can afford. And when I first joined this board, I brought up a set of innovative companies from Israel, you know, the top 15 companies in Israel. I actually called one of them. Their answer was, you are about two months too late. Boston Garros. You know, and it was a transformational Israeli company that we would have been very proud. I've actually asked them, the next time you and the US come and visit us, and they can visit you, Mayor, and the commissioners. But I believe there is a meeting in December, right? An Israeli meeting?
An Israeli meeting?
Yeah, that you organized?
What's happening in November is a conference on antisemitism.
Oh, antisemitism.
Yeah, right.
Well, I don't know if that's a proper-
Well, I just want you to know that we are no strangers to the Israelis.
That's right. That's right.
You know, we went on a trade mission to Israel, and so they certainly know of our presence. And there's a significant amount of Israeli investment in Fort Lauderdale already, but it happens to be in real estate.
Real estate. That's right.
Right? We can't compete with MIT and Harvard for the culture that, the ecosystem that they have in terms of that industry. So I can see how someone in that industry would gravitate to Boston. But I think Jay spoke about lifestyle. It's, you know, a lot of, that's really our calling card, is lifestyle. And that's what we can play off of. But I didn't mean to interrupt what you're saying, but the Israelis are not, they're no strangers to Fort Lauderdale.
That's right. Well, there are smaller Israeli companies that are still not aware. I know the effort that has been made, but these are new companies.
I know. I can. Another, I think we need another trip to Israel, right?
Yeah, Kevin. I would like to make-
Pull it closer to you. Pull it closer to you.
I would like to make one comment echoing on what Jay said and what you just said right now. Lifestyle is our calling card. And it's why people differentially choose to migrate to South Florida and Fort Lauderdale in general when they do discover us. And I think doing more to promote a lifestyle, our lifestyle, is extremely paramount. And I love some of Jay's suggestions because that's why people in like my industry do want to live here. And I think it's also our winning card against Miami. Miami's lifestyle is not our lifestyle. Our lifestyle is far superior. And it's something that we can continue to differentiate on.
One of the things that we did bring up in the meetings is the visibility that we get from things like the Visit Lauderdale Food and Wine Festival, from all the events that go on on the beach, whether it's Tortuga is one of the largest, most well-known events in the country. And the-
Does my challenge with the mayor of Las Vegas count?
Almost. Well, yeah. By the way, you're probably going to lose that one.
Hell.
But, but we've talked about investing, suggesting that the city continue to support small, medium-sized events going on in neighborhoods, in the Sis Trunk area, in the marketplace area, in fat villages that continues to grow south of Broward as well, additional uses. I know that I talked with a couple of folks just yesterday about expanding the use of some of the things at the Performing Arts Center that aren't utilized enough or often. So those are the kinds of things, I think you hear a theme here. And the theme here is the lifestyle is what we've got. We need to work on issues relating to mobility, to things for the great number of people that are moving in here, and understand who our customer base is a little bit more, and make sure that those folks in Cleveland, who probably know more about who would attend the Tortuga Conference than I, show than I would, that they know what's happening. Those are the kinds of things that people are interested in. And not just to visit us to stay in the hotel and go to the beach, but maybe relocate, maybe consider investing in Fort Lauderdale. And the more that they know about the kinds of events and neighborhood events that we, that we have, I know that he's been very, very vocal about making sure that, especially through all the construction that's going on now, we've lost some of those events that used to be, was it the Art Walk, the Friday Night thing, some of those things. Those things are, they need to be promoted. We need to put them, whether it's on your website, the Visit Lauderdale website, probably a little bit more money invested into social media. Probably wouldn't be one of the worst things for the city commission to think about, to get out what you do. to get out what you do. That's all.
Okay. Maybe we can hear from the commission. Start with District One, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, economic development has been something that has been near and dear to my heart, not just for District One, but obviously throughout the city. I, I think we need to continue working on, as you all have mentioned, diversifying the industries that we have. Obviously, we know that Fort Lauderdale has historically been built on the marine industry and development and tourism. But if we're going to remain resilient, expanding beyond, that is key. I know we are fortunate in District One to have the, the presence of Citrix up there, but I really want to see us continue to try and recruit in the IT space. I think it's, it's a green industry, which I think is, is advantageous for us. It is a, a high dollar per job industry and it's one that will continue to bring in more of that creative class that will be attracted, as you said, to our lifestyle down here. We are challenged right now by the number of firms that are relocating to Florida that are going down to the Brickell area or up to West Palm. So we have got to find a way to be competitive with them. I know I was looking at something not too long ago. It said we had 11 hedge funds relocate down to South Florida and we're not getting what I think is, is anywhere near the level of interest in Fort Lauderdale that we ought to be generating. Anybody who's driven down on Brickell within the last couple of years knows that getting from one end of Brickell to the other takes about an hour. And yet they're still continuing to attract, you know, the, the Ken Griffiths. And so we need to do a better job of presenting ourselves as a more livable alternative. You know, we've got the educated workforce here. We've got everything that attracts the CEOs that want to be down here. You know, no disrespect to what some of the recruiting efforts have done, but when I hear about CEOs being taken on tours of Weston, you know, that concerns me because people aren't relocating to Florida to live in Weston. So we need to do a better job of presenting the dynamic lifestyle that we have here because that's what the folks that are coming down here are going to be looking for. So I just encourage you to keep working along those lines, focusing on those industries that are going to, you know, raise our, our wage base, folks that can work remotely, I think is key as we're seeing. And I was looking at some statistics the other day saying that we've got 30 and 40% office vacancy rates in New York and Chicago and San Francisco. And we are that desirable alternative for that remote knowledge worker. So we can bring them here. We could focus on that and, and I think that's our opportunity. I really do. So thank you.
Is that high, John?
Yeah. So locally here, it's, it's 15% is the number that I've heard for Fort Lauderdale. So that tells us that we're doing pretty good in terms of attracting and recruiting and, and keeping our offices full. But when you're looking at some of the other larger cities, yeah, they're looking at 30%. The, the, there's a, a coming wave of default in commercial real estate that's going to be very problematic and we're just, we're the, you know, the, the financial industry is really just starting to look at that now. Because most of these buildings can't be repurposed because of the way they're constructed. They don't lend themselves to, to, you know, renovating them into residential or so forth. So it's cheaper to tear them down than it is to actually reconstruct them for residential housing is what I'm being told. So it's.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's going to be very problematic.
Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm really intrigued by what I've heard so far today and thinking overall citywide what we need to accomplish. And I want to thank you all for your due diligence and your commitment for what you've been doing. I heard you say how many people have kind of fell by the wayside from the board because they've gotten, in a sense, disheartened or maybe just kind of deterred about the process. A couple of things that were said that I just have question for, understanding that there are several resources that are out there basically doing the same thing. What are we doing far as to be in collaboration with them, to be a part of those conversations, to be at their tables as well? Are we, are we invited? Are we asking invitations? How do we achieve that to be a part of the conversations? Because from what I'm hearing, the resources, things are happening and it appears that we may not be a part of the component. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that, I know, you know, Russ sits on the Broward Workshop and, and I sit with the, on the chambers board. So, you know, we share ideas of the, each organization, but I think we could do a better job. I know Daphne, the Alliance, I believe you are involved in. So, you know, we hear a lot from each other, but the, the, there is a disconnect still.
Well, but, but you know what, Vice Mayor? I read in the paper the other day that State of Florida defunded Enterprise Florida. I mean, that's the, that's the, the department that is, that was designed to reach out and try to bring businesses here. They just completely defunded it and, and merged it with another agency and, which tells you that where is their, where is their head when it comes to knowing that you need to have a department to help, you know, massage these efforts to try to bring businesses here? It's all, you know, we can't be that way, you know?
No, then that's my point.
I agree with you 100%.
Yes. So where we are, the disconnect is, we have to find our spark to keep moving and make those things move forward. And I'm also, I thought I heard maybe there's a permission in a sense to move in a certain direction, how we promote, how we advertise. And this is, if that's the line in the sand, let's go to the line, let's do this because if the city is going to be resilient, we have to be that driving force. So if the agency that you just named has disconnect from us, we cannot stop there. It's just like when you push the kid out the, the nest, when it's time for them to go, they either fly or they sink, right? So we're going to fly. So we just need to come together. Some of the things that were said, I have some notes here that I'm, I'm just intrigued by. The startup, the advertisement and how we need to promote Fort Lauderdale. And there's many ways to do that. It's simple, like you said, Instagram, social media and Refresh Miami, I'm not familiar with it, but just the idea of it, something we need to talk about and see how we can implement. So those are my comments regarding.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Go ahead, Jay.
So the marketing is, I don't understand that, but I think it's very important, but I don't know who does that. Broward Alliance, I can speak to this because I'm a corporate real estate guy.
Greater Fort Lauderdale.
Greater Fort Lauderdale. So everything's been kind of wrapped up into that group and they, they pull the incentives. It's a very minor amount of money. So as these tenants come in, I built buildings for Citrix, Microsoft, Atna, Motorola, I do this. And we have groups of people that do the incentives. It comes out to maybe three months free rent to us.
They're not big money.
No, it's not big money and it's a lot of effort. So those kind of incentives just don't make a lot of, they don't make much impact. What does is lifestyle, but also buildings that work. So downtown Fort Lauderdale, you can't really build a building that works. It would be too expensive. You can't rent it for that amount of money. Cypress Creek you can. Cypress Creek has got a lot of.
Well, wait a minute. I mean, the Styles just built the building and now it's 100% filled.
Yes. So the attorneys, there's a very small group, attorneys and bankers and investment companies, not your tech companies, very few. I did 200 Los Olas, at least that building.
What about future tech?
Well, again, those rates are now at $50 a foot, call it. You can go to Cypress Creek for 18 net. So, you know, it's a, it's a hard gig.
Triple net.
And plus parking downtown. And it's, it's this hard gig to do. I don't, I don't say go ahead and do it, but a developer would do it if they could, by the way.
All right. Interesting.
Yeah. I, I hate to put it a little, you know, hopefully it happens.
Okay. Yes.
One other thing, Mayor. Hearing much now, you talked about artificial intelligence and even becoming a smart city. How do we, you know, that's something from what I'm reading and understanding that would also help us be more of that city that will, that will be, I'm having a moment where my words aren't coming out, but an opportunity where individuals in other states, other businesses will have an interest in what we are doing. So is that part of the conversation as well?
Absolutely. Absolutely. If you look at our universities here in South Florida, there's burgeoning programs around machine learning and artificial intelligence. One of the largest clusters of Nvidia GPUs is actually here in South Florida. And that cluster is used to chain, train next generation machine learning engineers who either are doing startups in Miami or a lot of them actually move. And I think there's an opportunity to partner with our local universities, all of whom are upgrading their GPU infrastructure currently. I'm currently working on a deal for a thousand GPU cluster here in South Florida. And we can work with these universities that say, as you're building out your machine learning, let's keep those graduates here and let's use those graduates here to recruit even more graduates. And to your thing, to your point, a lot of these programs are training people how to build application-specific models for things like traffic management or smart cities and so on and so forth. There's a whole, whole, I can take you through a whole litany of this stuff, but it's really cool because you can inspire a lot of young kids coming out of a university, attract more people to these universities who might not otherwise go to the universities and then give them an opportunity to, to start a business. You know, if you're, if you're 23 years old coming out of university, you can start a business that's going to be like the next Microsoft. That's the era that we're now in, believe it or not. I mean, it's probably the most.
So, so are you working with the presidents of those universities?
No. I mean, I, I deal with the infrastructure people, so.
So can we help make those connections for you? Would that be helpful or is it not necessary?
That would be very helpful. I, I'm in the cloud computing business myself, so I just, I sell infrastructure.
All right.
So I don't deal with the business people. I deal with the.
Okay. So we can, we can work with you on that. Okay.
Yeah, I deal with the ITEs.
Is there?
Okay.
Mayor, one, 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 one point on that. I've talked to George about it at length.
George Hanbury, who's the president of NSU.
The, there've been numerous studies, and I know Commissioner Herbst represented it a moment ago. There've been numerous studies. If the universities, the universities are the incubator for exactly some of the things that Kevin's talking about. Nova is not really focused in that area. They haven't, they have not been.
Well, they have that innovation center, don't they?
Well, that was funded by Alan Levan.
Right.
To, to put that together. Still, they're not turning out graduates. The Levan Center is really more of an incubator to try to incentivize some startup businesses. But businesses looking to relocate, especially in the areas of, of tech, I don't, I don't have Kevin's background to go through all that stuff. They're looking for college graduates who are coming out of those programs and neither Nova nor FAU here in Broward County are really focused in that particular area at the moment. So to generate those jobs, you mentioned it yourself, you're not going to compete with MIT and Harvard because they're turning out lots of graduates within that space, which is why companies want to locate there. Same thing in Silicon Valley. That's not what we're going to be. So we have to look at different kinds of opportunities to bring business in.
So somebody in the financial services industry had, comes to us a couple of years ago and they said, we may not get the investment banking, but there's a whole other segment called financial services which, for which Fort Lauderdale would be ripe in the taking and, and wanted to produce some kind of ecosystem that would attract that kind of business. So, so, you know, your point is well-taken in terms of the graduates and what's the talent that's available. If you speak to those presidents though, they seem to think like they're producing talent, but, yeah, all right. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So thank you, all of you, for what you do and, and for how you're helping. It's important. You know, what I would love to see going forward, and by the way, I just want to dovetail a little bit on what Jay said about office space. I believe Heinz and their partners are creating a lot of that new kind of office space in the Fat Village project. I've seen, you know, some plans that look like they're specifically gearing some of that office space for technology, spaces that we don't necessarily have right now in the city of Fort Lauderdale. So I think you're going to see a big change with that project starting to rise in Fat Village. So I just wanted to mention that.
Stick the structure in a good location. I hope that works.
Yeah, we all hope it works. So let's, let's, we'll, we'll know. But, you know, what I would love to see, the synergy between the commission and, and your board, this shouldn't be just a conversation that we have off the cuff every two years. I'd love to see, you know, first of all, do you have a strategic plan as a board? What exactly is the mission that you're trying to fulfill as a board? I mean, I understand when you say that people drop off because you meet and then nothing happens, but I would say maybe try to make it happen more and be really strategic in what you're doing and then bring it to us, you know? We get a lot of communications from the different boards and we discuss them at commission meetings. So, you know, when you have ideas, when you want to move on something that you might consider to be really important, then it's just a simple communication to the city commission and that becomes part of our agenda and we deal with it at a conference meeting. So I would encourage that kind of conversation so that we can really move on specific items. You know, I remember years ago, we actually did have a, a specified, and this was the only position that that person had, we had an economic development manager. We have had that in the past and I, I think that maybe we actually should be revisiting that.
Well, that's, that's kind of one of the hats that Daphne wears.
But I'm not saying one of the hats. I'm saying it was the hat. It was the hat only, that was the only hat that that person ever wore. Greg's got his finger up. I think it's a good finger. Was that a good finger? Thank you, go ahead. Oh, no, go ahead. If it's about this, please chime right in. It's, it's a distance. I'm, I'm hoping it was.
Do you share your time with the, with the city?
I'm going to share my time for the moment with the city manager.
So, you know, I, I, I'm so glad this conversation's happening. I couldn't agree with you more about AI and just the convergence of where we are today, positioning, location, moment in time. I think it's a very exciting time and for all the attributes that Fort Lauderdale uniquely offers here in South Florida, we need to do a better job in marketing, branding, bringing an awareness to everyone about what Fort Lauderdale is about. Now, you're right. It's one of the many hats that Daphne wears and I think that Daphne has, or does a wonderful job, goes above and beyond to try to make many things together. And her potential has allowed us to open doors with international investors, with individuals that would never know or understand what Fort Lauderdale is about. What we are, we are accelerating, something that we were proposing to start in October. We're actually going to start it very soon and we're assembling a team. I'd like to ask if Zoe, Arlene, Vaughn, if y'all can stand up? These are new members that are now part of Daphne's team and the team will keep growing. And I have yet to send a memo to you all announcing that we are going to rebrand Government Affairs and Economic Development and we're going to encapsulate all these conversations and we're going to call this Public Affairs. As a public affairs, a component of the city, we are exactly targeting what you all are saying. So I appreciate the conversations and staff looks forward to working through Daphne with you all in providing that, that direction and also suggestions, recommendations and also best practices. Mr. Cochran, you said Refresh Miami. I worked in the city of Miami for 12 years and let me tell you, they, they do a great job marketing, but when you look in depth, there's really not that, that flavor or the attributes that we have here. So we want to take the Refresh Miami and, and make it, you know, purposeful, intentional and wanted to, want to, you know, do Refresh Fort Lauderdale, you know? So definitely I'm soaking all that in with Daphne. We've been texting throughout the, the conversation, but yeah, we want to align ourselves to seize the opportunities with AI, fintech, the metaverse, machine learning. All those technologies will not only help bring people in, but provide sustainability, jobs, business growth and, and appreciate this conversation. So you'll have a memo outlining some of these goals and we're going to be having now a public affairs division.
Excellent. Well, that's all good to hear, so I thank you for that. And then I would just close by saying that there are areas I think that we can pursue with this new effort that you just mentioned, Greg, and also the board. I'd like to see your board and also this new office really work with the real estate industry much more closely than I think we do. I've always said this even with regards to when it comes to schools, like Russ. I've always said this even with regards to when it comes to schools, like Russ mentioned the schools, where are our kids going to go to school if we come to your city? We have to do a much better job of explaining the programs that are in our schools to folks that are on the front lines, like commercial and residential real estate agents, because they do talk to all of these people from around the country. They need to understand it better. So I think we have a real opportunity to educate that industry about what's happening in our city, both regards business and also regarding our education system. And I'd like to see also some work from the city's perspective. I know this maybe, might be a little bit just too much of the aesthetics, but I think it's important for all of our gateways in our city to look attractive. I'm happy to see some of the progress that we're going to see now on Broward Boulevard because that street's been really an unsightly entrance to our city from the west and from the turnpike and I-95. But with the projects that are coming down the pike, I think that's going to change. Jay, you mentioned Seastown. That also is definitely a gateway as you, as you come from the east or come from the west and head south on federal highway. That's going to be transformative, what's going to happen there. So we have to make our city more attractive, actually. I think we have to pay more attention to the streetscapes and what our city looks like to folks when they come here and they visit. I'm a big proponent in making sure, I represent a, a large portion of the beach and I'm always driving up and down. That's our economic engine. It, it needs to always be attractive. It needs to be welcoming. And I think that the whole city needs to be attractive and welcoming. So those are just some of the other thoughts that I had, Mayor, but I'm really happy to see about this new office, public affairs. And again, I'd love to be able to have us work closer and we should be meeting more often. I would like to see a strategic plan so that it's not just you meet. I don't know how your agendas get formulated. I don't know what you tackle or why you tackle it, but I'd love to see us be able to formulate some sort of strategic plan and then make sure that we're checking off the boxes as time goes on. Again, thank you so much. I appreciate your work.
I want to mention one thing. I'm for office downtown. The place that's going to work probably is like Heinz because it's a lifestyle center. So when you get lifestyle, restaurants, apartments, transportation, that makes sense. Seastown's kind of the same thing. So if we can encourage developers to do a lot, to mixed use, we did it in Plantation.
Well, you're absolutely right, Jay. And I've been banging my head against the wall for years because these developers, they build residential and they forget the lifestyle.
Exactly.
Right?
Right.
And you can't have a sustainable downtown, like Flagler Village is all hot and exciting now, but it's not, it's, it's not sustainable if you don't have the lifestyle component.
Right.
You don't just live and breathe by bars and restaurants alone. There has to be more to the lifestyle and, and so hopefully we'll be able to, like you said, the Heinz project, it's a lifestyle project if it all comes together.
And lifestyle means office as well, so that
It means office, it means grocery stores, it means dry cleaners, it means apartments, it means all of that. It means open space. Yes, Bill?
If we look at the Galleria space, this is a perfect
Please.
It's a perfect example where, you know, what our city is missing is, is part of this lifestyle portion is, is, is we don't have a great place to shop.
We're working on that.
We don't have a dynamic mall, and that, that, that's a
I agree with you. We're working on that.
I think that and, and, and the, the local marketing is what is one of the biggest things, I think, that we can do for all of us in all of our industries
I agree.
is the marketing.
Enrique.
Fifty more.
Bring the mic to your, to your, just move the mic. Move the mic. It moves.
This related to the theme that Commissioner Erbs brought up.
Yeah.
The issue of the growth of hedge funds in Miami, and you mentioned financial, the attractiveness of Fort Lauderdale for financial services. There is a subsegment of the investment management business, which Fort Lauderdale has a unique opportunity to approach and gain, which is capturing family offices, annual meetings.
Okay.
Family offices are a huge conglomerate of wealth. They have private annual events. There's about 15 to 20 of them on an annual basis, and they are attended by the wealthiest families of this country, including the family office of Bloomberg. Okay? And I think there, there will be absolutely
How do you tap into that?
You, you contact the event organizers. I can work with Stephanie and provide you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Sturman.
Just a couple of very brief things. First of all, thank you all very much for your service of the city. It's very much appreciated, guys. Two quick things. I think the word I'm trying to say is validating. I think a lot of what you say here validates what we try to do up here on a daily basis, things such as parks, transportation, education, public safety, and I'll talk even about mobility in addition to transportation, walkability, bicycling and all that. I think how that translates into economic development is, is validating on the things that we need to do up here to make what you do more easier. And the only other thing I do want to touch upon is nobody did mention the movie industry. I know that there was some movement there. Any thoughts about that?
Yeah, we, we were briefed on that with the studio that's coming, and I believe that we were trying to get them as a guest to go, yeah.
You, put the microphone to your mouth.
Status?
I'm still, still working on it, but we're looking to have someone from that industry come in that's working on building out the stage studios.
There are, there are any number of things that have been beneficial. At last, last week's county commission meeting, Lighter, Sandy Leiderman, who is the new film czar for Broward County, spoke to the very significant number of, of productions that are heading in this direction. So that, that is growing. We have lots of filming locations in Fort Lauderdale. The whole concept of the sound stages, that the Wingate area sound stages, while moving along, the shovel's not in the ground yet. There's some funding issues that we were alerted to that still, that still remain to be seen. But I wouldn't be surprised if you get a couple of knocks on the doors from various film producers looking, this is normal, by the way, for local government to pitch in financially to help some of these productions. But I would suggest that, that Daphne will work with, with Sandy Leiderman at the county. But it is, it is a growing industry. It is a growing industry for any number of reasons. First of all, access to talent is pretty good, low cost, the, the union costs are not as high as they are elsewhere. We're not going to be Atlanta, but the reason that Atlanta is what is it is, and you see that peach on, on all of these television shows, is quite frankly because they've invested it. They've put money into
The state, the state has put money.
The state has money. The state is absolutely
And the county supposedly has
Well, we're not going to see that in Florida.
But the state, the county has a small fund also
Yes.
that they've dedicated to. Kevin?
Yeah, I was just going to add, the movie industry is also directly in line with what we're talking about with AI and ML startups. So when you go to Santa Monica, that's the hotbed for all of the digital studios that do all of the post-processing of all of the things that are coming out of the actual stages themselves. So it's a whole class of the industry that uses AI and ML to basically produce every single movie that we see today. Everything is digitally mastered. Everything is, you know, a guy at a computer or a woman at a computer, taking what comes off the digital reel and then transforming what we actually see. So I think the whole push on the movie industry is exactly a component of also drawing specific types of startups here in the AI ML space.
Did you complete, okay, very good. So I, I think, you know, first of all, again, thank you for all meeting today, and I know you all are busy people and you have your lives and you have your work, but I think this was an important beginning of a dialogue and a conversation. I, I think when Kevin first started speaking and talked about, you know, how we, how we engage the young people that are moving into our area, that is number one, right? We see all these young people moving into our community. We've got to give them a reason to stay. We've got to give them opportunity. You know, when I moved here, when I was in my late twenties, the first thing people told me is, oh, you'll never make it as a lawyer because we have so many lawyers here. So, I mean, that was the most discouraging thing I have ever heard. Of course, I didn't listen to it, but the point is that we have to find opportunities and ways to, to, to broadcast what it is that we have to offer. And we do some of that. I mean, visit Florida, visit, visit Lauderdale, you know, does it in terms of tourism, okay? The, you know, the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance does it to some extent, but it's not Fort Lauderdale-focused. And that's always been difficult for, for me personally, to think that, you know, we're, we're competing against 30 other cities, and oftentimes it's the western cities that seem to get a lot of attention. So that's why we have a Daphne to, you know, to bring forth the, the effort to, to try to make Fort Lauderdale a, you know, the, the place that people should focus on. But, but trying to tap into the interest of young people, which has everything to do with digitation, whatever, whatever is digital, whatever is, you know, part of the new information age, this is where Fort Lauderdale can, can, can really make its mark. Because we talk about, you know, hedge funds, and we talk about all those other traditional legacy kind of things, but those are places that will soon have their own, they'll, they'll have their own expiration date. If we're going to be the city of the future, we have to find things that are just now beginning to germinate in the minds and in the business cycle, and that's where Fort Lauderdale can be the city of the future. So I agree with you 100% in what you're saying, and we need to continue this conversation and come up with, you know, specific, specific deliverables that will allow us to move forward and, you know, in that direction. Whether it means, you know, preparing a new website for us, like you, you talked about, or going beyond there, introducing you to the presidents of these, these, these colleges to see if we can try to generate more interest in graduates into these, into this line of work. But ultimately, it's trying to maintain a sustainable economy that's going to grow with the population and not discourage people from wanting to live here. So, so I encourage the committee to continue to work with Daphne's office and the city manager. Is there anybody else that has anything else they'd like to add?
Um, yes, I would just
Yes, Vice Mayor.
would like to add. Thank you. Encouraging the board and commission, let's not leave any district behind. Let's bring everyone up to this platform so we could all benefit as a city from what's coming with our promotion and our branding and that we all will live in love and have this wonderful life here in, in, in Fort Lauderdale. So I encourage you, when we make these plans, that you do not forget about District 3 because there's, we have to come up, we're, we're underfunded, we're underinvested, so this is an area that needs to be invested in and brought up to be at the bar with the other districts in this city. So I implore you to please stay engaged and, and allow us to even congregate, congressate, conversate and add information and ideas to the planning that's going ahead. Okay? Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
Thank you.
We'll resume. So the meeting is concluded, and we'll resume at 1:30.